Aloha and good morning. Welcome to the Joint Hearing of Senate Committees on Government Operations and Commerce and Consumer Protection. Today is Tuesday, March 23rd, just a little after 9:30 a.m. We are in Conference Room 229 with members of the committee and public joining via either in person or via video conference. I'm Sharon Moriwaki, Chair of the Government Operations Committee, and joining me are members Senator Favella and Senator -- I thought I saw Senator Gabbard. Also joining me is Chair Senator Roz Baker and members of the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Affairs. Chair, would you like to introduce your members?
The members of Consumer Protection, Commerce and Consumer Protection are Senators Nishihara, Senators Gilbert Vier, Senator Benet Mijalucha, and Senator Joyce Sanbueno Ventura.
Thank you. Before proceeding, a few housekeeping announcements.
And of course, I'm sorry, Senator Favella. I was just -- sorry, Senator, I was just looking at the ones in the room. We are happy to have you as a member of our committee.
Okay. So I'm moving into housekeeping announcements. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. You can find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on live and on-demand video at the legislature's website. In the unlikely event that we encounter major technical difficulties during the hearing and must end it abruptly, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Thursday, March 25th, at 3:00 p.m. To accommodate everyone who registered to testify remotely, we will be limiting testimony to two minutes. The first measure is House Bill 424, H.D. 1, which requires all state agencies to adopt a preference for renting electric or hybrid vehicles if suitable and available. First up is Hawaii State Energy Office in support -- do I -- I say -- oh, Chris?
Hello, this is Chris Youngker from the Hawaii State Energy Office. Stand on our written testimony in support. I would just note that this would support competitive pricing of ZEVs for the state's upcoming procurement contract, as the rental car companies would know that if they add for whatever ZEVs they're able to add, they would have high utilization. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Hawaiian Electric in support.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs and Committee Members. I am the testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric. We stand on our written testimony in support and have proposed amendment to the definition of suitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Enterprise Holdings in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chairs and members of the Joint Committees. Tiffany Aijima for Enterprise Holdings. We stand on our testimonies regarding the intent of the H.D. 1 version of this bill. The H.D. 1 encourages demand for EV rentals when rented by the government, and we are available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii County in support. Do we have anyone from Hawaii County?
Kauai or Hawaii?
Kauai County, sorry. Kauai County?
Office of Economic Development.
Oh, I know why. Because it's written, that's why.
Okay.
Faith Action Environmental Justice Task Force in support. And Our Revolution Hawaii in support. Anyone from?
Good morning, Chair, Committee. I'm Dave Monex. I'm representing our statewide organization of 7,000 members. We stand in strong support of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. From the county of -- oh, members, do you have any questions of people who are here with us in conference? I do have one question of Chris Youngker from H.S.E.O.
Yes.
Hi, aloha. There was one question from Kauai County about the cost and the comparable cost for these vehicles, that, you know, how do we curtail it? Do you have an idea of how much of a premium we would pay for electric vehicles, or is it in the zone of, you know, reasonable?
It would be subject to the solicitation that comes out. We did look at potential impacts if the rental cars would be moved from compact to a mid-size cost, and for the $13,000 on a year, for the statewide, it would be roughly a budget impact of around $20,000. However, that's one of the things that would come out of this solicitation, and that's why this bill would be important, is that the pricing would reflect a higher utilization, simply because the rental car companies would know they'd be able to rent them. So whatever they would be able to add would be at a arguably better price.
So I did see the Kauai County this concern. You know, everybody has a concern with the budget. And looking at how we might insert a proviso saying that, you know, of comparable value, would that be something that would be helpful, at least for all the county as well as state agencies, to put in certain through this bill?
And I believe subject to check that the bill does have a line in there about depending upon the budget impacts of the -- for the individual agencies. But something along the lines that protects agencies against adverse budget impacts should they not have the funds would be acceptable.
Thank you. Chair, any questions?
Just to be clear, the recommended amendment from Kauai says adding to Section B after Sub 1 and 2, the rental rate for the electric vehicle or hybrid vehicle is comparable to that of a conventional vehicle of the same class. So to the testifier that was just speaking, is that something that you had in mind?
It would be difficult, because I guess if they're talking about vehicle classes in terms of it being priced at a compact, that would be probably constraining, I imagine, because it would allow for an out saying that if a ZEV wasn't priced at a compact vehicle, then they wouldn't be able to rent it, or they wouldn't have to rent it. Where I think the idea is that as long as the pricing is reasonable, that a state or state employee should rent the vehicle. So I'm not sure if that amendment would imply that the ZEV would have to be priced at a compact. If not, if that is the case.
Well, it's just comparable to a conventional vehicle. It wouldn't say identical.
Okay.
And it's within the same class.
Yeah, and within the same class. So, I mean, while we're -- while we want to, you know, help be energy efficient and help the environment, we've also got to be mindful that there's a finite amount of resources that can go for any one thing. So I think we're trying to at least provide some parameters. At least that was what the county of Kauai was suggesting.
Yes, understand. And I think if it's a light-duty passenger car, I think that that's comparable would work, as long as that covers, you know, like a, you know, mid-size car or a larger car.
Chris, just to clarify, it is within the same class, so if you're saying, you know, a sedan or whatever, those types of vehicles. But, you know, within that class, the cost is comparable, not that you're going to get the, you know, the super Cadillac or whatever in the class, you know what I mean? Or van, or van, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So that's okay with the H.S.E.O.?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? Okay, thank you. We do have written testimony from County of Kauai in support, Climate Protectors Hawaii in support, Kauai Climate Action Coalition in support, and 350 Hawaii in support, Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party in support, and 11 individuals with written testimony in support. Any comments, questions? Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The last testimony.
Pull your microphone down towards you.
To the last testifier, where is he?
Hawaii State.
My question is the comparable class. I used to have an EV, and my question is, shouldn't it not only be a comparable class but comparable range? Because my EV could not go to Kona.
And I think that that is one of the things in the bill, too, as long as the vehicle is suitable for the given rental and the utilization that's required. I think, as we pointed out in our testimony, that most of the 13,000 compact vehicles that were rented were rented for about a day and a half in under 200 miles. And the current vehicles that will be on the market right now that are light-duty passenger cars have ranges in excess of 200 miles.
So my question is, I mean, if we're going to do this amendment of a comparable of the same class, shouldn't it also have the same range for the activity? Because even if, like in my case, I live over in Puna, I had a Nissan Leaf, even if it's less than 200 miles to Kona, it couldn't do -- it couldn't go up the mountain, up Mauna Kea, up Saddle Road, and down to Kona in the same, you know, with one charge. And at that time, there was no EV station that would allow me to recharge and stay for the two or three hours to charge that EV in order for me to complete my task. So that's my concern. It's not that it's only the same class, like, but also the same range. Because we don't want a government employee to be stuck in Kona and stay there for the entire half hour or half day in order to be able to recharge to be able to go back home, to go back.
And to that point, I believe that what would be needed, or is in there actually, is that it's suitable for the rental that's being done, not necessarily needed for the car. But if you know that you're renting a car and you're going to be traveling less than 200 miles, then the zero-emission vehicle or the hybrid would certainly be able to go that distance without even needing a charge. And so it would satisfy the needs of that particular utilization for the rental.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr.? Any other questions? Okay, moving along then. What was that? Oh, good. Thank you. So House Bill 516, House Draft 1, requires persons receiving state funds or financial assistance to donate unnecessary and functioning electronic equipment to nonprofit organizations to refurbish and distribute to eligible persons. And the first up is Department of Education. Brooke Connor, aloha.
Aloha, chair, committee members, both chairs, in fact. This is Brooke Connor. I'm the CIO for the Department of Education, speaking on behalf of the superintendent. We will stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. We are in force available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Next up, Attorney General Stella Cam. Is that -- I see you there. Hi, aloha.
John. There you go. Vice Chairs and members of the committee. I'm Stella Cam, Deputy Attorney General. The Department of the Attorney General has provided comments regarding this bill and has concerns about the difficulty, if not a possibility, of enforcement with this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's the -- anybody else wishing to testify who's on this conference? Members, questions? Okay, we have written testimony from Department of Accounting and General Services in opposition, State Procurement Office in opposition, and Joe Hammond, an individual in support. Any comments? Moving on to SCR 142, requesting the auditor to update report 1209 assessing the social and financial effects of mandatory health insurance coverage for fertility preservation procedures for persons diagnosed with cancer. First up is the Office of the Editor -- Office of the Auditor. I see Les Condo here. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Les Condo. I'm the state auditor. We have some concerns about the resolution. The primary one being that it doesn't -- that there is no bill that is presently -- that had been introduced at the legislature that would mandate this insurance coverage. So under our section, the one that requires us to do the assessment of any proposed mandatory insurance coverage, which is Section 23-51, it specifically requires that there be a bill that is pending before the legislature and that bill be identified in the resolution or in the concurrent resolution. And the primary purpose for that is we are required to assess both the social and the financial impacts of the proposed mandatory insurance coverage. And for us to do that, we have to understand what is being proposed, what coverage is being proposed. So the status right now, without any bill that's mandating insurance coverage, it's very difficult, maybe impossible, for us to do that. It references a 2012 report that we did, but that report also raised some concerns that insurers had raised about the proposed bill, and it's unclear to me whether or not the legislature is intending to introduce the same bill. So that's the concern that I'm expressing, is that there is no bill that presently is before the legislature that we're supposed to assess. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, auditor. Next up is Hawaii Society of Clinical Oncology in support. Is anyone here representing the society?
Yes, Chair.
Oh, oh.
Beliko Shiro. Hi. Beliko Shiro, on behalf of the Hawaii Society of Clinical Oncology, good morning, Chair Moriwaki and Chair Baker and members of the committee. Thank you for scheduling this resolution. We submitted our written testimony and will stand on that. I would just like to clarify that this is actually based off of a 2012 bill, HB number 2105, which later on became a concurrent resolution cited in its SCR 142, and then later became a 2012 study. Our concern is that the 2012 study came back extremely inconclusive, said we couldn't figure out anything, so we don't know what to say. So that's why, on behalf of the society, we ask that the auditor update his report from the 2012 report. And so it's a little different than what I think he's citing under 23-51, which doesn't require that there be current legislation, it just says that there be legislation. So we would rely on the 2012 HB 2105. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, questions? Senator Vier?
Hi, Blake, how are you today?
Hello, Senator.
Aloha. So is there additional information that's available now? If we listen to what the auditor said, he said it would be pretty much a similar situation as 2012. So is there more information now that he could refer to in this audit that would come to a more substantive conclusion as opposed to the 2012 report?
Yes, actually, 10 states have since that time passed a similar type of mandatory coverage. In the SCR, you'll find reference to two specific states, Connecticut as well as California, both of which came out with findings that it would increase about .034% or 19 cents in each different state, but it really depends because their type of coverage and insurance is different than ours in Hawaii. And so that's why we think the auditor can make an updated report based off of those 10 states and their experiences.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Members? I have one for the auditor. Is Les there? Les, could you respond to Mr. Oshiro's comment that there was a bill in 2012, none this year? Would that apply, or can you clarify the application of 23-51, please?
No, thank you for the question, and perhaps I wasn't very articulate when I was testifying initially. So Senator Gabbard's question, it clearly shows to me that I wasn't conveying my concerns very well. Really, right now, there, you know, Blake Oshiro has identified a bill in 2012. The problem is, there's no present bill. So it's almost like we would be required to guess as to what the legislature may be intending in terms of a new bill, in terms of what they intend to mandate. So that 2012 report that we had issued, it identified a number of questions that the insurers had raised, questions about the bill itself, about who's going to pay for the storage costs of the preserved embryos and the sperm, how long that requirement is, how long the storage requirements or the cost of that would be borne by the insurers. So those kind of questions, to me, still are out there, and I assume that whatever new bill that would be introduced may address -- I shouldn't assume, but I would expect that some of those questions may be addressed by whatever new proposal the legislature may eventually introduce. So that's the concern. Right now, we're kind of shooting in the dark, because we don't really know what the legislature intends. So my thought might be, and I'm sorry if I'm overstepping my area, but my thought might be is, if there's a different vehicle, to introduce the bill, whether it's the 2012 bill or the amended bill, that we actually can assess against, apply the criteria that's in the statute to assess whatever mandate that the legislature may be considering, then we might be able to do this. But right now, there's nothing out there for us to assess.
Thank you. Senator Baker?
Well, Les, you should know that we are past the deadline for introducing bills or replacing and gutting and replacing, so that's not an option. However, if we were to craft the SCR slightly differently and ask you to take a look at the 10 states that have passed this kind of legislation and give us an update on their experience, that would give us some data and some reference points for which we might be able to take this up as a real bill to deal with this very important issue in the next session. I really think that's what we're looking for from you, and not analyze a bill that we can't produce at this point. But you could take a look at what the other states have done, and we could provide that direction by amending this SCR.
I guess if I could respond, Senator, I think that under the technical reading or the precise reading of 2351, if you introduce a bill next session to mandate this insurance coverage, then there should be a concurrent resolution that asks us to do this assessment. So to me, it's almost like we are kind of putting the cart in front of the horse, because we'd be back here next session with another concurrent resolution asking us to do this study before the insurance coverage is mandated. So, and my preference would be that that process, instead of us doing it twice, we do it once. And rather than us having to update our 2012 report, that if it's just a survey as to how other states have been handling this type of mandated insurance coverage, perhaps that study, maybe there's a different agency that would be better equipped to do that. And it's, you know, outside of our statutory mandate, and perhaps we would be better served to do different types of audits instead of doing some kind of report or survey.
With all due respect, Mr. Condo, you're not being very helpful. Thank you. Adam, Chair.
Anybody else with questions? Thank you very much. We will move on. Thank you. Next is SCR 143, requesting the auditor to conduct a social and financial assessment of mandatory health insurance coverage for reproductive healthcare services. First up is the Hawaii Women's Coalition in support. I see Laura. Unmute yourself, please.
Good morning. I'm Laura Field, on behalf of the Hawaii Women's Coalition. I will stand on our written testimony in support.
The next is LGBT Caucus of the Democratic Party. Oh, I see Mike.
Good morning, Senator. Michael Guo, you on behalf of the LGBT Caucus?
Technical.
Hawaii U. D. stands in full support of this resolution.
Thank you. The Planned Parenthood Votes Northwest in Hawaii in support. Is anyone here from the Planned Parenthood?
Yes, that's me.
That was you? Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, Laura. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members, questions? We do have written testimony from Ma'i Movement Hawaii in support, ACLU of Hawaii in support, Common Cause Hawaii with comments, Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights in support, and seven individuals with written testimony in support. Questions, anyone? Comments? Okay, we will, at this time then, go into recess for decision-making. We're returning from recess and going into decision-making on these bills, reconvening the 9:30 hearing, the Joint Committee on Government Operations and Commerce and Consumer Protection. Let me just say that any bill passing will include the necessary technical non-substantive amendments. On HB 424, House Draft 1, requiring all state agencies to adopt a preference for renting electric or hybrid vehicles if suitable and available, the chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, taking Kauai County's concern regarding cost, to include language in Section 3, Page 6, at line 18, a proviso that the rental rate is comparable to a conventional vehicle of similar class. Members, questions, comments? On all of these measures, the Government Operations Committee will defer decision-making until our session today, our hearing today at 3 o'clock. So I'm going to turn it over to Chair Baker.
Okay, the recommendation to CPN is to pass House Bill 424, House Draft 1, with amendments. Any questions or concerns? Chair votes aye. Senator?
Chang, you see.
Yeah. Senator Nishihara, will you take the vote for us?
I started to.
Good. Okay. Just checking. Since it's hard to get the vote sheets to Senator Chang.
Thank you, Senator Nishihara.
You're welcome, Senator Chang. How do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. Senator Mijalucha?
Aye.
Nishihara goes aye. Senator Vier?
Aye.
Senator Sanbueno Ventura?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Okay, motion's adopted.
Thank you, members.
On House Bill 516, House Draft 1, requiring persons receiving state funds or financial assistance to donate unnecessary but functioning electronic equipment, the chair's recommendation is to defer indefinitely due to the testimonies of the DAGs and the State Procurement Office of the difficulty in implementing, and the AG is concerned that self-reporting would make enforcement almost impossible. Chair Baker?
Chair concurs. Defer indefinitely.
Definitely, indefinitely.
Yeah. Defer indefinitely.
Yes. Defer indefinitely.
We don't vote on it.
Oh.
We're deferring indefinitely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, moving on. I stand corrected. I keep on forgetting. SCR 142, requesting the auditor to update report 1209 assessing the effects of mandatory health insurance coverage for fertility procedures for persons diagnosed with cancer. Chair's recommendation is to defer indefinitely and hope that a bill comes through on which an assessment can be made next session. SCR 143, requesting the auditor to conduct a social and financial assessment of mandatory health insurance coverage for reproductive healthcare services. The chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, adding the bill reference SB 623 to initiate the assessment. Chair Baker?
So for the members of CPN, the recommendation on SCR 143 is to pass with amendments. Any questions, comments? If not, Chair votes aye.
For the members present, any voting with reservations or in opposition, seeing none, motion's adopted.
Thank you.
Let me announce first that GVO Committee will convene at 3:01 for decision-making on these measures today in Room 16. This concludes the joint hearing of Government Operations and Commerce and Consumer Protection Committees. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling to order the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection for our 10 o'clock agenda, we have a number of House bills on our agenda that we will be hearing and then hopefully making decisions on. be hearing and then hopefully making decisions on. Our first item is House Bill 961, House Draft One. This is relating to military dependence. It exempts dependence of military service members from state residency requirements for government employment if the military service member is in Hawaii on bona fide military orders, allows a spouse of an active-duty service member in the military who accompanies the service member a permanent change of station to Hawaii and holds a current unencumbered license in another jurisdiction in specific professions to apply for licensure on an expedited basis in Hawaii. This is a governor's package bill. We have joining us on Zoom Kelly Mae Douglas, U.S. Defense State Liaison Office. Good morning, Kelly Mae.
Good morning, Chair Baker, Vice Chair Chang, and members of committee. My name is Kelly Mae Douglas, and I'm the Pacific Southwest Regional Liaison for the Department of Defense, Defense Liaison Office. We work with state policymakers to resolve the top quality of life issues facing military service members and their families. I'm here to speak in support of the policy changes proposed within HB 961, HD1. I stand behind my written testimony and would just like to reiterate the two recommendations that for minor change that I had provided in the written testimony. The department appreciates the common sense approach of HB 961, HD1, to ensure that Hawaii can support the military community by reducing inefficiencies that create delays for military spouses in obtaining licensure and employment. We would like to ask that the chair and the committee consider clarifying the allowance for boards to require supervision as we believe that that could pose additional delays in obtaining employment for spouses and could negatively affect wages. We also would request that language be inserted to require the boards to provide that information about the temporary license on all websites and to ensure that the policies are accessible to military spouses as they research requirements ahead of or upon their arrival to Hawaii. In conclusion, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on the impact of the policy changes proposed within HB 961, HD1, and to provide additional recommendations. We do believe that this common sense proposal, if approved, would be a win-win-win for the military community, the public, and the state of Hawaii. With that, I stand by to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next testifier also joining us on Zoom is Suzanne Varislam, Commander, U.S. Indo-Pacific Command. Welcome.
Aloha, Chair Baker and Vice Chair Chang and members of the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Affairs. My name is Major General Suzanne Varislam, and I'm the Mobilization Assistant to Admiral Davidson, the Commander of U.S. Indo-Pacific Command. And I stand by my written testimony that I provided in support of House Bill 961. And I thank you so very much for hearing this bill and also hearing our testimony and reviewing it. I'm in support, of course, of streamlining the licensing process for military spouses and exempting military dependence from the current state residency requirements because I believe it could make not only a positive impact for our Department of Defense readiness and retention, but also the state of Hawaii. You know, we are the largest combatant command, and in terms of concentration of military personnel, you know, we are part of this ohana here in Hawaii. And I believe that a lot of our spouses have a lot to contribute. They're here for a short three-year tour, and whatever we can do to help positively ensure that we've got the right service members and helping our retention from a combatant command standpoint coming to Hawaii to serve, this is one of the pieces that many of the spouses have that I have encountered have expressed concerns about the process of licensing. So thank you so much for this opportunity, and I'm open to any questions that you might have. Aloha.
Okay. Thank you, Major General. Appreciate your testimony. We also have joining us on Zoom this morning is Alani Kyogi from DCCA Division of Professional Vocational Licensing. Good morning, Alani.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Alani Kyogi, Licensing Administrator for the Professional and Vocational Licensing Division. The department will stand on its written testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have joining us on Zoom Riker Wada, Department of Human Services Development. Good morning, Director.
Good morning, Chair Baker, Vice Chair Chang, members of the committee, Andrew Garrett, Deputy Director with State D-Herd. I will stand on our testimony in strong support and be available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Also joining us on Zoom is Brigadier General Neil Mutsuyoshi, Department of Defense.
Good morning, Chair Baker and Vice Chair Chang and members of the committee. Colonel Mutsuyoshi with the State Department of Defense. First of all, thank you for hearing this bill, Senator Baker. The Department of Defense will stand on its written testimony in support, and we're prepared to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We also have joining us on Zoom Jason Chung from the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jason Chung. I'm the Vice President, Military Affairs Council, Chamber of Commerce. We stand on our testimony strongly in support of House Bill 961. The only thing I would like to highlight, as Major General Varislam had stated, is that, you know, the military's been part of our community really since 1898 and makes up 8% of our population. So this is really about supporting all members of our community and adding much-needed capabilities in areas where in need of qualified professionals. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Mike Galloa, Sr., in support. Do we have any other testifiers joining us today? I don't believe so. Members, are there any questions for any of the folks that were on our Zoom call?
Yes.
Senator, go ahead.
Okay, I guess it would be, well, whoever is able to. I'm trying to figure out why we are changing the last law, which allows for reciprocity, to this current law. Because we did allow, prior to this bill, for a spouse, a military spouse, to be able to be licensed in the state of Hawaii. So I'm trying to figure out what the difference is.
Alani, are you still on the call?
I am, Chair Baker. Thank you, Senator. I can attempt to address the question.
Okay, thank you.
You're correct, Senator. The Hawaii Revise Statute, Chapter 436B, was amended in 2012 to allow for a provision for military spouses to become licensed in this jurisdiction expeditiously. That provision was amended in 2013. The difference between the current law and this particular bill is this provides a clearer process. It also provides clear language, which could possibly disqualify individuals from obtaining a temporary license if they have, for instance, disciplinary action taken in another jurisdiction, if they don't have the appropriate experience in another jurisdiction. So this, I think, provides a clear pathway of licensure through reciprocity and/or endorsement, whichever term you'd like to use. But it does set forth specific, clear guidance. So, for instance, in this measure, it specifically states that an individual has to be licensed and practice in another jurisdiction for at least one year, whereas the current language in 436B-14.7 does not provide that language. This also provides language that may disqualify an individual if they voluntarily surrendered a license, say, for instance, in another jurisdiction, where there is a pending complaint for investigation. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, so from reading the testimony, I'm sorry, it seems to me that this, I mean, I'm for this current bill, okay, don't get me wrong. But it implies that, well, one, it implied that, one, we did not provide for military spouses before when in fact we did. But the big thing I have is, one of the testimony talked about how long a process it was to get a temporary license. And it seems to me with the added restrictions in this new bill, and it actually states the number of, it actually states the kind of licenses that will be allowed versus the other one, the prior bill, which was just general, seems to me that this would be a longer process.
Well, respectfully, Senator, I think that this measure, the reason why we provided a clear distinction of specific professions, is because those professions have somewhat of a national standard. So they take the same examination across all licensed areas or jurisdictions. That's where that distinction is.
Okay. No, like I said, I'm good with it, but I don't know when I'll solve your problem, but it's good.
They're trying to address the chair's problem.
Okay. Sorry.
Because the chair has not always been a fan of this because I want to make sure that we are only licensing people who are really qualified, whether they're going to be working in a state six months, a year, or two years, depending on how the spouse is stationed, so.
Okay, so thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, Chair.
Yes. I see. Is this Kelly Mae?
Yes, Kelly Mae Douglas here. Yes, Senator, I appreciate that question. And also, Chair, I really appreciate your comments too about this bill addressing some of the previous concerns. The way that the U.S. Department of Defense looks at this bill as an improvement is that the process that's set forth now provides kind of a pre-vetting of 30 occupations that BCPA has already determined have substantially equivalent requirements, so that the spouses' credentials are not being evaluated at the point of application. It's already been decided by those boards that they are substantially equivalent. So it will save time for our spouses when they apply.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Members, any other questions on this measure? If not, let's go forward to House Bill 136, House Draft One, relating to liquor licenses. This applies liquor licensing provisions related to the transfer of licenses and the denial of licenses to limited liability companies. Let's see, we have Anna Hirai, City and County Honolulu Liquor Commission. Good morning. I think you're on.
You did.
Unmute yourself. There you go.
You would think after doing this a million times, I would agree.
I think it'll never be second nature, I don't think, Anna.
Good morning, Chair Baker, Vice Chair Chang, and committee members. I'm Anna Hirai, the Assistant Administrator at the Honolulu Liquor Commission. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure, which will clarify, modernize, and make uniform infrastructure changes that our licensees encounter on a regular basis without any reduction in the commission's ability to exercise oversight of the statutorily appropriate quality of the individuals or entities that are allowed to hold a liquor license. We have some suggested language changes in case House Bill 137, which you'll be hearing immediately after this measure, is moved forward, and that will align the language that both bills share. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this particular measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We also have testimony from, I don't know whether this is Kenneth Ho or Ken who?
Who.
Also in support, basically providing some comments, but in support of this measure. Anybody else on the call wishing to offer comments that maybe hasn't checked in with us? I don't see any members, any other questions. If not, let's move forward. Thank you very much, to House Bill 137, House Draft One, also relating to liquor. This would provide that violations of liquor tax law shall be referred to the Director of Taxation for Investigation, repeals the general right of inspection without a warrant to potential violations of liquor tax law, repeals the discretionary power of the Liquor Commission to deny a license to any person the commission finds not fit or proper to hold a license, requires applications for liquor licenses to be notarized, provides the administrator of the Liquor Commission discretion over whether to refer applications for investigation, and repeals the requirement that investigative reports to the commission include any and all matters that are relevant to the application of license in the judgment of the investigator. We have Deputy Attorney General Jennifer Y. H. Polk. Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Baker, Vice Chair Chang, and committee members. This is Jennifer, Deputy Attorney General Jennifer Y. H. Polk from the Department of the Attorney General. We have submitted testimony providing comments on a confirming amendment that we feel needs to be made. And I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Jennifer. Nice to know where you are these days. Thank you for your public service. We have some testimony from Isaac Choi, Department of Taxation. Isaac, are you on the call? Our representative?
Good morning. Jacob Hurlett's on behalf of the Department of Taxation. Will stand on our written testimony offering comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. We also have Franklin Don Ficaro Jr., Honolulu Liquor Commission, on the Zoom call. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Baker, Vice Chair Chang, and members of the committee. Don Ficaro, Administrator for the Honolulu Liquor Commission. And we support the testimony that we have submitted. We believe that changes that the Attorney General has recommended is, should be followed. It helps with respect to 244D and removes that obligation of the Honolulu Liquor Commission to investigate tax fraud. However, it does allow us, if we do see any tax violations, that we will cooperate and refer the matters to the Tax Department. With respect to cleaning up the statute, you know, the statute, there's stuff that, you know, is old. You know, you have this thing about fit and proper. It's, there is no definition of fit and proper. And with respect to the opinion of the investigator, it's so broad that, you know, we often have a clash between the attorneys representing the licensees and some of our investigators with respect to a person giving an opinion because the investigator has to look at the law and interpret it and give an opinion. When they have to give an opinion, then you have a lawyer saying, well, I disagree with your opinion. That's why that should be removed and allow the statute to meet statutory requirements. Because there's statutory requirements, if they meet it, a person should get their license. With respect to, you know, there's other matters about the, you know, as long as it's notarized, you know, the perjury law doesn't even apply the way it is in the statute. So, you know.
So we support this bill.
The changes will help immensely. And I'm free for any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nicholas Wong, Beer Lab Hawaii.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Nicholas Wong from Beer Lab Hawaii. I guess I just wanted to testify really on that opinion side. I guess we were just chatting about a little bit earlier there regarding the investigator's opinion. To give you guys a little bit of color on my personal experience regarding that, I guess, to give a little background, we opened our Proridge location, you know, and applied for our license in August of 2020. We have actually have eight months to hold this temporary license, and at the end of the seventh month, the investigator finally submitted their report, which turned out to be 40 pages, most of which is their opinion. And, you know, kind of summarizing what their final report stated, and it says, you know, in their, in their opinion, the statutory requirements for a restaurant have not been met. You know, we really, I guess, are in support of this, removing that opinion due to the fact that we really believe that when applying for a license, it should really be based on fact. should really be based on facts, not the opinion of one person. I'll hear your freedom of questions, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii.
Good morning, Chair Baker, members. Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We've submitted some written comments, and we'll stand on those. I just wanted to highlight one thing, and that is, at a previous hearing on the House side, the administrator, his main complaint appeared to be that investigators were demanding income tax returns of potential new and renewal licensees. And I'm not sure that the bill has amended addresses this. Just wanted to point that out. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Peter Nakagawa, Honolulu Liquor Commission. Offered testimony in support. Anybody else on the Zoom call that I missed that has comments on House Bill 137, House Draft 1? Members, any questions for any of the folks that we heard from? If not, let's go forward to House Bill 446, House Draft 3, the ever-famous Theft of Catalytic Converters Bill. This establishes a new offense of theft of a catalytic converter, requires vehicle registration records to be kept for businesses engaged in selling or negotiating the purchase of used motor vehicle parts or accessories or license to wreck, salvage, or dismantle motor vehicles, requires these businesses to refuse purchase of used motor vehicle parts or accessories and report the attempted sale to police if the seller does not provide certain information, changes the fines for any violation of the Used Motor Vehicle Parts and Accessories Law. We have Department of the Prosecuting Attorney, Mr. Mark Tom, in support. We have, I think, Melissa Pavlicek, Schnitzer Steel Hawaii, might be on the Zoom call. Good morning.
Aloha, Senator. Aloha, Vice Chair Chang, and members of the committee. My name is Melissa Pavlicek. I'm here today on behalf of Schnitzer Steel, which is a metals recycler and helps remove abandoned vehicles and other metals so that they can be recycled. And we supported the attempts to address catalytic converter theft throughout this session. This committee did accept a requested amendment we had earlier in the session on Senate Bill 1282. And because that bill didn't move forward, you didn't have an opportunity to hear the Deputy Attorney General point out that our requested amendment was unintentionally overbroad, and I apologize for not narrowly tailoring it enough. So we ask that you please consider a more specific and narrowly tailored exemption so that when we purchase a catalytic converter from a licensed dealer or muffler shop that has already obtained the documentation that you're seeking, we would not have to then replicate those documentation requests. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We also have testimony in support, although I don't believe they're joining us on Zoom, from Hawaii Transportation Association, from National Insurance Crime Bureau, Mr. Howard Handler in support, from American Property Casualty Insurance Association, testimony in support from Mark Seknum. We have comments from Mike Onofrieti, Hawaii Insurance Council, and testimony in support from Susan Wong. We have late testimony from Roberts Hawaii saying that they strongly support House Bill 446, House Draft 3. And they talk about why it's important to them. Do we have anybody else on the Zoom call who wants to make a comment on this measure? If not, members, any question? I think Melissa is the only one available to answer questions. If not, thank you, Melissa, for joining us. Let's move forward to House Bill 824, House Draft 2, relating to intoxicating liquor. Requires an express carrier company, common or contract carrier, except water carriers, as defined and regulated by the Surface Transportation Board of the United States or other person that transports liquor from outside the state or delivery in the state to prepare and file a monthly report with the Liquor Commission or Liquor Control Adjudication Board of each county. We have testimony in support from the Hawaii Liquor Hostellers Association. And let's see. They simply tell us what the measure does and ask us to pass it. I don't believe we have any other testifiers on that, so there's no one to ask questions of. The last item on our agenda this morning, or at least this agenda, is House Bill 1376, House Draft 2, relating to the Landlord-Tenant Code. This extends the period for notice of summary possession from five days to 15, requires landlords to enter intermediation, and delays when a landlord may seek possession of a dwelling if the tenant schedules or attempts to schedule mediation. Requires landlords to provide the notice to mediation centers that offer free mediation for residential landlord-tenant disputes. Restrictions when a landlord may exercise these remedies depending on the amount of rent due. Appropriates funds for the judiciary to contract for mediation services. Repeals one year after the expiration date of the final eviction moratorium imposed pursuant to a COVID-19 state of emergency proclamation. Let's see, we have testimony in support from Denise Issaria-Matsubara of HHFDC. We have testimony in support from Mr. Stephen Levin's Office of Consumer Protection. I believe Betty Lou Larson, Catholic Charities, may be joining us on Zoom. Betty Lou, are you there? If not, members, we have her testimony in support. We also have testimony in support from the Hawaii Association of Realtors, and we have comments from OHA. Is there anybody on the Zoom conference that may have submitted testimony that we did not receive? If not, unfortunately, members, there are no folks to ask questions of. This brings us to the end of the public hearing. We have a deferred decision-making that we can go into as well as decision-making for this. So with the members' permission, let's take a quick recess, and we'll do some decision-making. Thank you very much. We will reconvene the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection for purposes of decision-making. We have DM notes, I think, that were sent out to everyone. I'm wondering, Allison, if we also sent out DM notes on the deferred? Okay, we'll do those next. All right, the first item on our agenda is House Bill 961, House Draft 1, relating to military dependence. This was part of the governor's package. Chair wants to defer this measure till March 24th. This should say 9:30 a.m. and not 9:30 p.m. Although, I don't know, we'd have to probably have some beverages if we were going to do it at 9:30 p.m. But anyway, there's still a lot of unanswered questions, and I want to try to make sure that we get this measure correct. So we'll defer House Bill 961 till March 24th at 9:30 a.m. in the morning. The next item on our agenda is House Bill 136, House Draft 1, relating to liquor licenses. Chair recommends that we pass this measure with the amendments from the City and County Honolulu Liquor Commission to eliminate the concept, the subjective concept, of fit and proper person to have a license to merely one who meets the statutory requirements to hold a license. And there are some other tech amendments. Chair wants to give this measure a reasonably good date of 1/5/2022 so that we know that it's going to go into effect, and then they have to follow it the beginning of the year. Any questions or concerns? If not, House Bill 136, House Draft 1, passed with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Aye, Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator Missalucha.
Aye.
Senator Rivera.
Aye.
Senator Ben Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Okay, motion is adopted.
Thank you, members. That was 136. Okay, House Bill 137 is next, also relating to liquor. Chair recommends that we take the City and County Honolulu Liquor Commission recommendations and an AG clarifying recommendation. We're going to add an effective date. No, we're adding, are we adding a defective date? This one, this already has a defective date. We're going to make it effective, correct? Okay, we'll make it the same date as we did with the other one, which would be 1/5/2022, so they can all go into effect together. And there are some other technical non-substantive amendments for this measure. Any questions or concerns? If not, pass House Bill 137, House Draft 1, with the Senate draft. Chair votes aye.
Of the members present, any voting with reservations or in opposition, see non-motion is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 446, House Draft 3, is the ever-famous Catalytic Converters Measure. Chair recommends we pass this with amendments, substituting the theft language from Senate Bill 574, Senate Draft 2, and a clean effective date of January 1, 2022. We also want to amend Page 2, Line 8, to say a photocopy of a valid driver's license rather than writing down the driver's license number or taking pictures of the individual. And we're going to keep Section 2 of House Bill 446, House Draft 3, in this measure as well, as we are substituting some language from Senate Bill 576. Hopefully, that's not as clear as mud. If it's okay with the members, any questions or comments? If not, the recommendation is to pass House Bill 446, House Draft 3, with a Senate draft. Chair votes aye.
Of the members present, any voting in opposition or with reservations, see non-motion is adopted.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is House Bill 824, House Draft 2, relating to intoxicating liquor. This has to do with how the liquor is delivered from outside the state, requires some reporting. Chair recommends we pass this with amendments, a clean effective date of 7/1/2021. Any questions or comments? If not, Chair votes aye.
Of the members present, any voting with reservations or in opposition, see non-motion is adopted.
Okay. House Bill 1376, House Draft 2, relating to the Landlord-Tenant Code. This provides some clarity as to when one can be evicted, when you've got to go into mediation, appropriates funds for the judiciary to contract for mediation service, and repeals one year after the expiration date. Chair recommends that we pass this with amendments. We insert the contents of Senate Bill 1388, Senate Draft 2, which we think is written more appropriately than this measure. And it will have an effective date of 7/1/2021. Any questions or comments? If not, the recommendation is to pass House Bill 376, House Draft 2, with a Senate draft, and Chair votes aye.
Of the members present, any voting with reservations or in opposition, see non-motion is adopted.
Okay, so we will include that one and open up our deferred, our measures that were deferred for decision-making till today at 10:15. And we have two items on this one. House Bill 223, House Draft 1, relating to, do I have to find my? Yes. House Bill 223, House Draft 1, is relating to massage therapists. We heard this one previously. It requires licensees to complete 12 hours of continuing education within a two-year period. Two hours need to be in first aid and cardiopulmonary resuscitation or emergency-related items. Chair recommends we pass this with a Senate draft, basically making some technical non-substantive amendments and changing the effective date back to upon approval. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the Board of Massage Therapy wanted an implementation date of 2024. Is there a reason we're not going to give them some time to get that, get it working?
Well, the, it gives them until July 1, 2022, to put these into effect.
So you think one year is fine? I mean, I'm good with that, just letting you know.
Well, you know, you are correct. They did want us to amend the effective date. And I usually try to take their amendment, so let's, let me change the recommendation. It will be effective upon, the effective date is upon approval, but the implementation effect will be July 1, 2024.
Okay, thank you.
So they'll, we'll put everybody on notice that this is coming, but they won't have to meet these requirements until July 1, 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Senator, for calling that to my attention. You look at these so many times, it starts to all become a blur. Okay, the next item is House Bill 1192, relating to consumer protection. This is our small-dollar loans, payday lending. Chair recommends that we take the recommendations that DCCA Pew and a few other stakeholders worked on as a proposed SD-1. It has the following changes. Definitions of an annual percentage rate or interest. Amends the definition of control. Removes a total amount of the installment loan not be less than 600. Adds language with regard to what is, what an installment loan will be. Changes the minimum contract repayment period of the installment loan. Two months if the amount is 500 or less, four months if it's one penny over 500 or more. Adds provisions to the written agreement so that it's clear what is and what is not considered for this measure. Adds to the section regarding the form of the loan preceding the endorsement, redemption of the instrument. Includes the notice of assignment. And adds a section that if any loan made in violation of the licensing section is void, and makes some fee changes to the installment lender. This is a very comprehensive bill. It also is the closest we've ever gotten to an agreement between the regulator and the regulated. So we're going to change the effective date to July 1, 2021, providing that the licensing requirements for installment lenders established by Part 2 of Section 2 of this act shall take effect on January 1, 2022. And Part 3 of this act shall take effect on January 1, 2022. That gives people time to make signage adjustments, to make other kinds of adjustments, and gives IRS in DFI an opportunity to get all of the paperwork in order. Any questions or comments?
Thanks for your hard work and that's extensive.
I can't tell you how many years I've been working on this to finally. I can't tell you how many years I've been working on this to finally get it to something that could actually work, and I think.
It's much needed, especially at this time, when.
I think so.
The economic situation is very alarming.
So, I, I really want to give a shout-out to Iris over at DFI. She really worked very hard on this with, uh, the folks from Pew and, and engaging the small-dollar lenders, so I think we've got something that will work. So, the recommendation is to pass House Bill.
1192.
1192 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Does Senator Nishihara have to vote cede?
Okay. Of the members present, any voting with reservations or in opposition, see non-motions adopted. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Do we have another item on our agenda?
No.
Okay. We didn't take the vote for the massage therapist one.
Yeah. That's what's coming. Waiting for it.
And, and which one, oh, that one is to.
Pass with amendments.
Pass with amendments?
Yep.
Ah, yes. Uh, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna change the effective date back to upon approval, and all the testimony was supportive.
And implementation to 2024.
Uh, yes. So, we're changing the defective date back to upon approval. We're amending the implementation date to July 1, 2024, so everybody has ample time to meet the requirements. Okay. We'll ta- we'll, we'll actually take that vote now.
Yes.
Chair votes aye.
Of the members present, any voting with opposition or with reservation, see non-motions adopted.
And, and, and on a final note, Chair appreciates all of the hard work that all of the members do, and I appreciate my able staff for keeping the chair on the right track.
Yes.
So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you guys, even on Zoom. We look forward to seeing you in the Square Building one of these days. Aloha. We are adjourned.